Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting of the board of selectmen to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance and I would recognize the deputy first selectman to lead the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, madam. All members of the board of selectmen are present. Is there any public participation? This is one of two opportunities for the public to address the board. If if you'd like to speak, kindly identify yourself by your name and address. You're on the agenda for a later point in the meeting, we will get to that as well. Again, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting to address the board. Are any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Mr. Leach, kindly identify yourself with your name and your address, please.
Bob Leach, 39 Church Street. Just curious, I noticed there wasn't any. Oh, I'm sorry, any nominations for any boards or commissions on tonight's agenda? I know that there are a couple for CIP. And CIP is going to be meeting very soon to do allocations and I would like to have those members on the board or on the committee, rather. Just curious.
So we're in possession of, prior to today, I was in possession of one who was. My understanding had been that she was applying for a position on the next CIP, which is seated in July. I'll have my staff reach out to them and determine what their intentions were, but. Our working assumption was that she was applying for the the next iteration of the board based on the application.
Okay, I was just curious because we're down to, I believe, three members at the moment.
Remind me who the three are. Is it you, Adam and Bill Towers?
That's correct.
We'll circle back on that and have something, one way or the other, for the the June 3rd meeting.
Great, thanks.
Comments or questions from members of the public? Seeing none, there will be an opportunity later in the meeting and we invite your comment then. Oh, I skipped the approval of the minutes, my mistake. There are two pack, two items in your packet, the regular meeting minutes from April 15th and the regular meeting minutes from April, from May 6th. This is, this was an amended package that went out yesterday. Members had a chance to review them. Any, any comments or corrections? Could I have a motion?
Selectman Muska will move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from April 15th, 2021.
There a second?
We're reduced, so we'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion or corrections? Seeing none, Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Nordeau?
Sorry, couldn't get my mute undone. Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
So for the, uh, motion passes, minutes are adopted. For those members who are keeping themselves on mute but want to opine just to vote, if you press and hold the spacebar, you temporarily unmute yourself until you release it.
You know, I've done that. I was doing that quite a bit, but there seemed to be a delay. There was a lot of times I'd press the spacebar and I'd start talking and you guys would all tell me I was still muted, but. Maybe it's just my PC and, or my connection at the time, but if you do that, give it a second before you start speaking, probably.
Mine doesn't work either, Alan, so.
No, Alan, you're muted right now.
Didn't work.
Mine works fine.
Apparently Charlie and I both have AMD processors or something.
Hey, I, I, I'm a fan of AMD and have, have owned a fair amount of stock in them over time.
Probably the stock is better than the chip.
It all depends on when you buy and sell.
This is why in-person works best.
Meeting minutes from May 6th. These were the addendum to the, or the amendment to the submission. If members have had an opportunity to review these, I'd ask for a motion and a second and then we'll discuss any corrections that need to be made.
Selectman Muska will move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from May 6th, 2021.
Is there a second?
We're reduced, so we'll second those.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Nordeau?
Aye.
And Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Minutes are adopted. Under Communications, I included two that I wanted to make the board aware of. 6A. Is testimony that I submitted to the government administration and Elections Committee on behalf of the town, basically putting a marker down indicating the town's interest in Solnit North if the state were ever conveying the property. I submitted written testimony and provided oral comments as well. This is a rehash of a request that's been submitted, I think, four times in the past and I, I keep doing it in the, in the event that the state is looking to dispossess the property.
Jason, can I just ask you a question in regards to that? If this were to pass, do you know the timeline as to when the town would take ownership?
So I'll speak in generalities because first of all, I'll tell you, this did not advance out of committee, so this is not going to pass. But generally speaking, the legislature puts together one conveyance bill that incorporates all of the conveyance requests that they deem appropriate to advance and then they pass that once a year. Then, I think the process is that those parcels included or those projects included in the conveyance bill. Get referred over to the State Properties Review Board and there's a legal administrative process that happens in the executive branch, including things like A2 boundary surveys, site plans. The Attorney General's Office has a role in the. The template deed transference, there, there's a, another process that takes a number of months. I'm not, I've not followed one start to finish, but my guess is it's probably in the six to eight month range. There's a whole, there's a whole board in DAS that actually is charged with administering that.
Okay, I was just thinking down the line because I think we get, don't we get somewhat like $12 million for having that in the community here? And I was just thinking, no, okay, do we get something?
We get it, it, we get a pilot payment for that and all other state properties that are in town and that in total is something like 548,000, not, not anywhere near 12 million.
Okay, I just was trying to think.
12 million is what I think they use to operate it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Also, Jason, like, do we have a plan for that if it were to happen or are we in the process of getting a plan together if that were to happen? We would need to know what we're gonna do with the current properties that we have. If we're gonna move, you know, Town Hall, the Senior Center, the Annex, all to that facility. And it also kind of conveyed that possibly the state would be responsible for upkeep, but, or not upkeep, but. Where did I read it? Something about. Changing the, the properties over. Is that something the state would do or? Would we be on?
Question, can you point me to a paragraph you're looking at?
No, I can't now. But obviously, like.
I'll answer your general question and then if you have the specific one, I'm happy to address that as well. In terms of the future use of the property and or other municipal properties, that really would be dependent on the conveyance language that's included in the bill. So it's, it's somewhat premature to make a determination what it would be. It might be that the state says it needs to be used for municipal use. It might be that the state says it needs to be used for a commercial use. It might be that this, the state puts other restrictions on the property about what it can't be used for. So all of that is really cart before the horse. They would need to indicate why they are conveying it to the town. And then we would need to, to meet whatever stipulation is in that language. And typically what happens is if a municipality who's receiving this can't meet the terms that are included in the conveyance bill, then ownership reverts back to the state. So we can't tell them, we're taking it for purpose A and then turn around and use it for purpose B. We can, we can tell them we would use it for purpose A and then if we don't use it for purpose A, they get it back. That's typically how it goes. So and that all is dependent on what the conveyance language is, which is an academic conversation at this point because they've already shown it's not happening this year.
Okay, so regardless though, because we don't have the conveyance in front of us, there's no way for us to plan ahead. And decide what would go there, what couldn't go there and what it would cost us to, to. You know, my point is, is like, there's probably a cost to us in revamping certain facilities or making them adequate to serve our needs. I doubt every building there would serve an exact purpose for what we currently need. And there would be a cost associated with us as far as, you know, changing something so we could accommodate the senior center perfectly. And the Annex and.
You're talking about a feasibility study and in order to do that, you need access to the property and you need access to their records, none of which we have. We can't get on there because it's a restricted state facility. We don't have any, any evidence as to what the, the ongoing maintenance and operational costs of that are in terms of itemization. We can't tell what the electric bill is, what the water bill is, what the, you know, what the maintenance costs are, what the, we don't even know how old the roof is. You know, I mean, there's, there's like a whole litany of things that we couldn't possibly know and therefore couldn't possibly study until, until it became a reality. The long and short of it is, it isn't a reality and it's just a marker that we are putting down in the event the state looks to dispossess the property. About 10 years ago, they did that and this, this parcel was on the chopping block. And ultimately it was a similar facility in Hampden that they chose to close down and convey. But the purpose of the submission in front of the GAE committee was to basically remind folks that if they were in that mindset of, of reducing state properties, we'd take this. They politely said, the, the DCF Commissioner testified to people in front of me and she politely said, we're still using it. Which I knew, I knew they were going to do, but you put the marker down anyway.
Yeah, I read the testimonies and, I mean, I was just a little more, it seemed your letter was a little more forward than, than what you're stating now is it just being, showing that we have interest in it.
So what I was explaining was the process. What I was just explaining to you all was the process, what my letter was, was actually pointing to an intended use. Knowing that the state was going to say, because I actually talked to DCF before I submitted the testimony. They told me they're gonna say, we're still using it. I said, okay, I'm still putting the chip down. Because I'm certainly not gonna, we, we're certainly not going to get it if we don't express an interest. So that's all it was, it's just a marker. I'll, I'll resubmit it again next year.
In the future, if they were to actually, you know, pass that out of the, out of the committee and it were to become a law or whatever, I guess. And, and so then we'd be offered the property at that time. It's not like we, all of a sudden, hear you're getting it and you don't have any say in the matter, right? We could then, to our study and figure out what we want to do and, and say yes or no at that point in time, right?
Right, right. They can't, I don't believe they can compel us to take it. We do, we do through some sovereignty, sovereignty.
There's like, it's not like a, oh, we're, you know, it's on offer now, take it or leave it, it's, it's on offer now. We have a time to do our feasibility study, decide what, you know, as a town, what we want to do and, and go from there and then tell them what, right? I mean, that's typically what would happen.
Yeah, it's, it's not a fast process. So, um, if there's nothing else on that. 6B is much better news. So you'll recall that we're trying to resolve the South Road ownership circumstance that has disadvantaged the residents there. This bill, Senate or House Bill 1114 seeks to, to lift the low income requirements on property owners on that parcel. And that did pass out of committee, so that's going to be incorporated into the omnibus conveyance bill. That is good news. It didn't pass out unanimously. There were, there were three no votes, but I don't think that that would be sufficient enough to preclude it from, from moving forward. So it's now onto the House and then to the Senate to see that it is actually included in the conveyance bill, but it looks like that low income restriction is going to be coming off. We should know the answer to that sometime between now and June 9th and I think it will be probably that Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday when we'll see that for sure. So that would be the last. State level hurdle and low income restriction hurdle associated with, with dispossessing that property and restoring the homeowners' rights to the ground their homes sit on. There are some other internal things that we still need to work out. I think I shared with you that we're starting the sewer, sewer line improvements that need to be done. There's also some lot line configurations that need to be addressed and some outbuildings that need to be, we, we need to sort out ownership there, but. We're inching closer to a resolution here at a pace I'm actually pretty comfortable with. So I'm hoping that we'll have more information on that. Well, I'll have more tangible things from board action, probably the first meeting in July is my guess, as things progress. So that's really good news. I'm, I'm actually, and, and the reception from the leadership of the committee was very supportive, so good stuff. We don't have any resignations, reappointments or new appointments and I kind of just shared with you the South Road update, but I'll, I'll answer any questions anybody has about that if there are any. Really, we're still in the, the legal process here before we move on to the land use process.
Jason, there was one. Jason, there was one homeowner that was having some legal issues regarding the property line with the mudding property. Did you ever contact that individual?
No, and I think that was an encroachment thing with the, the answer is no. I don't, I don't have any new information on that. That's the first informational form we had back in November. I haven't heard of it as a prevailing, a prevailing issue and we use the same, we use JR Russo for the, the boundary survey, the same as the, the developer did. It's probably been a resolved issue.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of it once we move forward.
Yeah, Russo did the, the company's survey and ours, so we're, we're okay there, I think.
Alright, good.
Okay, Wetlands violations, citations and procedures ordinance. Ruth Calabrese is with us. She's the town's zoning enforcement officer, as you know. And I'm gonna turn this over to Ruth and to Alan, because this has been something that Alan has been working on with a passion for quite some time. It's been through the Wetlands Commission and it's been referred and reviewed by Pullman and Comley. There have been some rewrites from Pullman that are incorporated into the packet. There's the clean version in the red line, but Alan, you want to walk us through it?
I can give you a brief overview of it. So basically, as you guys know, we've been, you know, a couple, a couple of times we've tried to get this passed and basically this. Is just kind of setting up the same thing that I already have at Planning and Zoning where if you have a violation, you know, you have a, a mechanism to. To get compliance from the. The, the violator, you know, before actually just having to go to court or put a lien on their property or something. So, you know, basically there's, there's a flow chart that I don't know if we have, but. You know, there's a pretty circuitous path that we take to really make sure that the, the person or the violator. Has, you know, an off-ramp on a number of occasions to, you know, to get themselves back into compliance and avoid fees. So these fees are basically the upshot of this is just to be able to charge a fee. For a violation that is unaddressed and, you know. You know, we just, you, multiple refusals by whoever that, whether it's company or resident. And, and bring them back into compliance and it closely mirrors what planning and zoning has already done for years and years. I don't know, Ruth, if you have anything else you would like to add to that?
Well, I could share the flow chart. I'm trying to make my way. To it, if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, so where we're at with it now, while she's doing that is, you know, we've, like Jason says, we, we really hashed it out a, a lot at the planning, at the Wetlands Commission. Both for some time before Ruth came and Ruth helped us get it over the line. It's been vetted once again by the, by our lawyers, the town lawyers, so everything is in place. It needs our approval and then to go to town meeting. And, and then of course, you know, it'll become an ordinance if it passes, so that this is the last stop before a town meeting, which we do want to do in person and not on Zoom.
Okay, I thought I had sent myself a link to the, the file that have.
You know what, I.
I apologize.
I could have done that myself, actually, but.
We have a hard copy in our package.
Of the flow chart?
Yep.
Okay, good. So really. As Alan was saying, the flow chart goes through the sequence of, you know, an initial notice of violation and whether or not things get corrected. And there's probably three, you know, solid off-ramps for opportunities prior to going to citation. And then that goes to a hearing before citation's actually issued.
Are you gonna see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
So we'll just kind of cruise through it real quick. So obviously we send a notice of violation. And that's really 90% of like everything we do, especially with residents and even with, and with your better developers. The minute somebody gets that letter, they're calling right into the office and they're saying, hey, what's going on? I had no idea what, you know, that I was doing something here that, that, you know. And it's, and it gets settled. I mean, a lot of times it doesn't even come to the commission unless it's, you know, a little bit more complex or, or whatever, but. So that's the first stop and, and, and really, I gotta say, over the years that I've been doing this, that's where it ends. Never, never really goes, it's just like really 1% of all of our cases that actually ends up going on. So, um, so anyway, if they take care of it, sorry. They take care of it, you know, it's done. Now, the first kind of fork in the road we have is if, if the, the matterage is urgent, which means like it's really serious, somebody's actually polluting. You know, digging into a wetland, you know, silting up or polluting a water course. Um, the Wetlands can just vote to do a citation right then and there. And then you can see, you know, then you go down that path, which is, you know, right down through the citation. You got 30 days now. If you look at this, you have a lot of time flying by, even on that, you know, it's urgent, sorry. You know, you have your initial. Letter, then you have 30 days before you. Have a, a check, did, did you correct it or you want to appeal it, whatever, then you get your fine. So there's, it's quite a bit of time. For normal ones, it's the 30 days and then, you know, then it heads down that path. So it could be 60 days before, you know, you come to a resolution. So. Hi, hon, I'm busy right now, thank you. So. So it's really, it's not like, it's not like people are gonna get a, a, a fee started all of a sudden, like you're gonna get a letter and all of a sudden you're gonna get slammed with fees. You're gonna get a letter, you're gonna have some time to call in and, and get it figured out. If it's not like a huge issue that's, that's gotta be resolved, you're gonna get another 30 days. So it's two months to kind of work through it before you get to the, the, to the fee schedule. And really. That 1%, that's what happens right now anyways. We get, you know, we just basically, in some cases when, I'm sorry. When, when we have a problem, we just get ignored, just completely ignored. We have a current case right now that is a good example of why we need this. So we sent out a violation letter and we're ignored and then we're kind of, you know, okay, fine, I'll come in and then canceled. You know, and, and we've had that before where you just kind of get jerked around a little bit. And then finally, because of the nature of the, of the violation, we had to go to court and so we immediately we go from, you know, a letter to a court case, right? Which costs everybody money and we, that's what we're trying to avoid with this and. It is also, you know, kind of takes some of the matters of us resolving it amicably with the, with the violator or the alleged violator. Out of our hands and into the court's hands, which is not good for the alleged violator. So this really is a help for the violators and it's also gives us another tool. We don't have to go right to the lawyers and start spending money and that kind of stuff. Now, you know, one might say, well, why do you even bother with that in the first place? If we don't properly police, for lack of a better word, manage our good stewards of our inland wetlands. Then it just reverts to deep and they'll do it for us. So everybody's application would have to go through the state. And that's obviously. A lot of time. So it's kind of in a nutshell. I don't know if anybody's got any questions.
I do, Alan. I have two, actually. First one is, has the fee schedule been established? Is that also done?
Yes, do we have that?
That's not included in our packet.
The ordinance does speak to the fee schedule being amended by the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency from time to time.
Well, we have a, we have a current one.
Yeah, and.
We have, we have a draft one.
It would be proposed, yeah, it could be, because it would, if this passes, then that would have to be passed by the inland wetlands agency, but we would definitely share that and we, I, I don't know, it's not in our. Not in our packet, but we, I think we're pretty reasonable and we tried to, again. Kind of track what we already have with planning and zoning and, and again, we're not trying to like make money off of this. Let me tell you, the fees that you get when you get a judgment against you at court. Far surpass this. And that's what we have right now is a current case where somebody got a judgment against them and the fees are, they can rack up really quickly. So this is really, uh, this is a protection for everybody.
I do have that. I do have the fine, the proposed fine. Schedule, if you want to see it.
Want to see that, Charlie, now or?
No, no, I just was curious if, to whether there was, you know, one that was current, that's all.
Work on that because that was a, a failure to plan for, you know, one of the times that we, we had brought this to town meeting. People were concerned that there wasn't a fee schedule, so we have that in hand this time.
Okay, and then my second question was about the appointing of the hearing officer and it states here that the board of selectmen do it. To serve as a two-year term, but I just wondered, when is that done? Is that done right after the election of the selectmen or is there a certain term that is already established and ends? And how do we know that term? Like, when is it coming up?
So if you were to be appointed on May 20th, 2021, you would serve until May 19th, 2023. It's, we, most of our appointments don't have appointment target dates, but they're for a term certain. So it would be whenever the selectman went ahead and appointed that hearing officer.
So we don't currently have one?
I think we do. I think it's Bob Slate.
That's true.
Okay. Because I just, I didn't remember doing one and we've almost served two years, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's a two-year term or not, but I can check quickly.
But the way the ordinance is now, there's no power. But the way the ordinance is now, there's no power in his ability to do anything.
Well, it would, the the fee schedule, the the. The ability or the need or the the decision to actually find and the decision to modify that fine. Like, say, somebody came up and racked up, uh, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars worth of fines. The inland wetlands uh, commission could vote to decrease that. Or that they could devote to say, you know, we've got compliance and there was no harm, no foul. So uh, we're going to zero that out. You know, there's flexibility there um, as far as that's concerned.
Okay.
And the individual who gets the citation can ask for the hearing and the hearing officer can adjust based on. Evidence presented.
You know, of course, the wetlands and I guess that would be where the wetlands commission would would say, here's what we think should happen based on, you know, the impacts and the the experience that we had trying to get compliance. You know, so uh, the. The idea is that, you know, again, we're looking for compliance. If you can get to compliance and you haven't caused damage or a lot of money to be spent, then, you know, I think we could be reasonable.
Okay.
Charlie, to answer your question, Bob Slate is the citation hearing officer. Uh, and he, his term expires on February twentieth of twenty twenty-two. We did reappoint him early in our term. Any other questions or comments on this? I just say, I, this is, this is a good stopgap between our current two options of, please do what we want you to and we'll see you in court. And I I just want to thank Alan and the I inland wetlands folks for spending a lot of time and putting a lot of thought into this. They they really did really think through how this is going to work. And and Ruth, thank you for your part in this as well.
And Ruth has been extremely helpful. It came in very timely, right when we needed to wrap everything up and make it all professional. So excellent job, Ruth.
Thank you.
Um, so if there's no other comments on this, Alan?
I had a question. When are we going to have a public town meeting in person so we can pass this thing?
So the executive orders have been extended to June thirtieth. Well, actually, they've been extended beyond that, but the uh, the remote meetings have been extended to June thirtieth. That was just done two days ago. So this will, this will be in the hopper for a little bit, but you know, we'll keep our 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 commitment to Mr. Pittman to to make sure we're doing this as a live and in-person um, town meeting.
No, and I, and I, I want to, I really want to do it that way, too, because um, we've, we've been at this before at town meeting and I, that's how I want to finish it.
Yep. Selectman Baker, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, I would like to make a motion that the. Um, I'm sorry, I just lost my place here. Uh, anyway, I I'd like to make a motion that the board of selectmen approve this res, this inland wetland citation ordinance and pass it to town meeting.
Is there a second?
Like, second.
Go ahead.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Sarah. Any further discussion on the proposed ordinance?
Jason, just to make sure that we're in compliance with um, the fourteen day, I believe it is for town meeting. Could we put when appropriate at the end of that? Motion.
Uh, what fourteen day?
I thought that if you pass something at board of selectmen meeting for town meeting, you have fourteen days to notice it. I could be wrong, but that's my, was my understanding.
No, I don't believe that's correct.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure we don't get in any um, timeframe constraints. Okay.
Any further discussion? Selectman D'Souza.
Hi.
Selectman Baker.
Hi.
Selectman Nordell.
Hi.
Selectman Muska.
Hi.
Ordinance passes unanimously onto town meeting. Next um, is to include uh, community services director Melissa Maltese. Melissa, as you all know, has been working in, you know, on many things. But uh, one of the projects she's been working on is something I'm very excited about, which is the um, implementation of a summer concert series, which many, many towns have done for many years and East Windsor hasn't. Because of Melissa's good work, we're now going to be hosting eight of them this year. There'll be two Thursdays a month um, through June, June, July and August with a couple of Tuesdays thrown in there. Melissa can share the specific dates of, uh, if you guys are interested. But one of the things that's come up as a question of interest is whether um, some, some accommodation can be made to allow for um, uh, concert goers to purchase, to bring a bottle of wine or, or, you know, s- some picnic-y stuff to enjoy the the show. So I'll let Melissa kind of explain what the the plan is and what her thoughts are. And then we'll open it up for feedback from the board. Melissa?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Uh, so as Jason said, uh, we are super excited to have our first summer concert, uh, June tenth, right at the park on our new newly constructed band shell. The first band up on our docket this year is going to be a local Broadbrook Band, Steel and Easy. Six thirty to eight at East Windsor Park. The full schedule will be released next week. Uh, we had one band unfortunately back out, so we are in the process of filling that spot. So we will announce the whole um, lineup uh, next week, hopefully on by Tuesday. Uh, so in regards to this request, uh, we have been getting some calls and and different organizations that are looking to promote the concert series, wondering if we allow beer and wine to be had at the park. Uh, right now, the current ordinance states that uh, no alcohol is allowed on town property without board of selectmen approval. So we're looking uh, for the board's approval to either create a policy or um, gain approval to host um, this at East Windsor Park for just the summer concert series. We're asking for it to be an exception during the that, um, those events. To be um, done responsibly and with the guidance of the first selectmen's office and the police department.
So in terms of talking about this, I I I'll be honest, I've been an elected official here for fourteen years now. And I always thought that there was an absolute cold prohibition on alcoholic beverages on town property, like bar none without exception. And so we talked about, you know, different ways we could redraft the ordinance so that, you know, there could be some reasonable accommodation under very specific circumstances. And then upon reading the ordinance that's been in place for thirty years, you don't need to, the the exception has been there literally the entire time. So Melissa has talked to uh, the chief of police. Um, and when Clark was here, we we worked with him as well to figure out what exactly we would need to do. Um, and there have been some recommendations uh, that have been provided back. The thought, the general thought is to to provide an application form with specific guidelines that can be brought to the board for approval. Um, so so conceptually, it would be things like, um, how many people are are going to attend? What is the nature of the event? Has it been, has it been authorized by the chief of police, by the fire marshal, by the planner? To make sure that we're thinking about those things that we need to 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 do. What type of alcohol, what type of event, who's the sponsoring organization? Just things like that to make sure that we have our our ducks in a row. But we think this could be a nice way of of enhancing a really positive community experience in a reasonable and controlled way. So what are your, what are your thoughts on that as a concept? Sarah?
Selectman Muska, Jason, when you say application, do you mean the party that would like to bring the alcoholic beverage to the event would need to fill that out?
The hosting, the the hosting organization. So in this case, Melissa, as Parks and Recreation would be the applicant. Just like if you were doing a special permit for um, like the Hal Kreske thing that's at Joe's uh, package store. Not everybody who goes to that fills out an application, but the host organization does and assumes some liability.
Okay.
So we have a model, sorry, we have a model with Cromwell. They do an except, exception uh, for alcoholic beverages application process with the Cromwell Police Department. So uh, we'd like to model it after them where they have to put the agency asking permission. Like, as Jason said, how many people are expected, um, what would be permitted? And the length of time that it would be permitted for.
Okay, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Other questions or comment? Any feedback?
I just think it's going to be beneficial. There's been a lot of concerns over the years that when those, excuse me, when those type of activities come up, that you can't bring it. I think it certainly will enhance people coming forward to attend some of those things. And it's only for an hour and a half. So I don't think there's going to be any real strong liability for somebody to sit down and listen and have a little snack and take a little drink. Um, so I I think it's a good idea moving forward.
They can also take some of the pressure off of my staff as well to have to not walk around constantly telling people to put it away. That's currently what we have to do specifically on July fourth. We have a lot of trouble with that. So just being able to have our staff there if needed and just reminding people to be responsible is what our goal is.
Yeah, and what we don't want to do is, we don't want to be encouraging a nineteen-year-old who who's a a summer staffer to be, you know, having to police adults who are supposed to be acting like adults. You know, that that's not what we want to, that's not a circumstance we want to invite. But we want to provide reasonable controls so that, you know, there there's some flexibility around the the process. Sarah, you had your hand up.
Just for clarification, this is just during the summer concert series, correct? Not during regular park hours?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
The general practice could be, though, that if there was an organization and and Captain Lemay is going to speak to this next. But if there was an organization who was doing a private event, they'd have to meet that same set of criteria and that same set of of, you know, whatever requirements are going to be on that form. And they may be denied. You know, if it becomes something that that looks like a circumstance we don't want to have get out of hand, then we we as the authority could shut it down, could say, no, you know, we're not going to approve this. And and that's left by the ordinance to this board's uh, best judgment to make that determination. So in Melissa's case, she's doing eight events. We wouldn't make her fill out eight applications. We'd make her fill out one application for the series, recognizing that it's the same event by the same sponsoring organization. You know, that that seems to make some sense. But, you know, my neighbors and I want to go down to the to the rez on Saturday. I'm going to fill out a form, but you you guys ought to shut that down. You know, there's a degree of reasonableness that needs to be applied here. Uh, I I and I think, I think the five of us get it. Other questions or comments?
Selectman Nordell, I think it's a great idea. I just strongly think there should be time restraints on it, like, you know, after six and not past ten or something along those lines, so.
That's a, that's a very reasonable suggestion.
In the past, we've had this discussion about, uh, I think specifically, Melissa, the the issue you were having with keeping people, your 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 nineteen-year-olds keeping thirty or forty or fifty-year-olds from drinking. And I'm just a little concerned, uh, I don't know if I'd call it a concern, but I I I wonder how we envision handling the fifty-three-year-old that's been drinking all afternoon and then shows up and is obnoxious and is drinking. Like, I I mean, if you had that happen already in the past anyway, how do you handle that? And, you know, and, you know, in this case, you know, some people, you know, are just like that. They they're going to get partying and get it going and then just get really out of hand when they get to where they're going. How do you handle that?
Sure, so we've had a couple isolated incidents where people have come to the park intoxicated. We observe them uh, for a little bit. And if we feel that it's an unsafe practice, then we call um, the police department for assistance. And it's, it's been a working environment that's been fine. They usually have people in our district anyway stationed on that side of town. So um, the response time is always, is always good. We, we've not had an issue.
And there are still pub- public drunkenness standards that, you know, you you can't be blitzed just because. You know, there's, you can still be in excess even if you're not consuming in public. And and there are laws that protect that.
Yeah, no, I'm, I think this is a fantastic idea. I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, that staff is safe. Other people are safe and, you know, and and it sounds like, uh, as I suspected, I'm, I'm, I'm sure they know when it's going on and they might even be sitting in the parking lot for part of the time. So um, we, I just want to make sure.
Process, we have a process with our staff that um, they are not to approach if it's an unsafe um, environment. So again, that's where the observation factor comes in and getting the name of the the person or the license plate, make, model of the car. We've had to do that in the past, so we have a little bit of practice in that.
Okay, so you have the problem whether you're allowing drinking there or not, which is obvious, like, I'm sure the case. But yeah, I just want to make sure we did have a process and it sounds like you do.
And as part of the, you know, I'm I'm brainstorming, but as part of the potential sign-off from the chief of police based on the applicants, the chief could recommend whether or not there needed to be an officer on site or not. You know, I mean, if it's. You know, the summer concert series, which I I expect will be a relatively tame set of circumstances. He might say, probably not necessary on a Thursday night. If you're going to be doing, uh, you know, my high school reunion, he he might just say, you know what? Things could get a little out of control. That class of two thousand was was a mess anyway. Let's make sure there's a police officer on on hand, you know, that. We could incorporate his his best judgment into his approval process.
I like that.
Last two thousand was rowdy, man.
I don't know.
Any other questions or comments on the the general concept of this? So what what we'll do, um, and and we've started the process of of kind of staffing out what this should look like. With the board's acquiescence, we'll um, we'll go ahead and and see if we can get a draft of a form for you um, by our next meeting. I might even, I'll circulate that as early as we can with the hope that we can approve it for the next meeting. And that way Melissa could uh, meet her June tenth inaugural summer concert event. Because we we don't want to, we don't want to delay that. Unless you guys want to go ahead and authorize her to do it now, um, recognizing that she operates under the town and bear some responsibility for that going off well. Anybody want to authorize Melissa now?
I personally would like to see the draft um, before that's done.
Anybody else?
I'm comfortable now, but I mean, it's a, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, lose that vote.
I'm fine with that, too, since we only have a couple of weeks and. She's marrying up.
Um, if the, if the chief of police is going to overlook it as well, I'm a fine, I'm fine with approving it now and just send it to us as soon as it's drafted. But if he's going to be looking it over to approve it, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Melissa, uh, do we have the luxury of time here to come back with a form in in two weeks? Or should we uh, move forward this evening?
I think we're okay with waiting.
Okay, then um. To Sarah's point, rather, rather safe than sorry here. And and I appreciate the the sentiment from board members voicing their their confidence in her. But if we have the the luxury of time, we should use it. So we'll get a draft circulated as quickly as we can. Um, and if you have any uh, feedback, just let us know and we'll, we'll try and incorporate that for a final approval on the third. Okay. So with with that as the general premise for how we we may move forward with this, we kind of have another applicant and I'd invite Captain Lemay to explain what his thought process is and and what they're planning, now that he's had the benefit of listening to our conversation. Now that he's had the benefit of listening to our conversation. Captain Lemay?
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. Appreciate it. I come to you tonight to explain what's going on, as most of you have read the patch or heard around town. It is the Broadway Fire Department's hundred twenty-fifth anniversary this year. With that being said, we're going to have an event. We're going to hold it at East Windsor Reservoir. It's going to include food trucks, bounce houses. You know, stuff like that. We're also going to have a parade, a fireman's parade, which is going to come down Main Street. Like it did for many, many years in this town until not too long ago, we had to stop doing it for unseen reasons. That will take place. It will leave from the East Windsor Middle School and it will parade to the East Windsor Park. And after the festivities at the park, we're planning on having a fireworks display. In town that evening at nine PM at that night on August twenty first is the date. And the parade is going to kick off at five and end at the park, hopefully around six, six thirty. Depending on the amount of people we get. The reason I come to you tonight is in the past, firemen have been known to have a few beers here and there. And we're looking. Backing up with Melissa said to back up to what Melissa said, looking to have a fireman's beer garden. At the East Windsor Reservoir. For that festivity and that's going to be for parade participants only. That's going to be in a controlled environment. It's going to be gated. Nobody will be allowed in there unless you're over the age of twenty-one. And we're just looking for the permission from the board of selectmen to move forward with it. To be, make it part of our festivities. As now I can also fill out an application and I have plenty of time to submit it. But I would like to see what your thoughts are in order to move forward.
So Captain, first of all, congratulations to you and your organization on that impressive milestone. Lot, lot of service to the community, so thank you for that. I, I, you know. It was your, the notion of your event that actually started this conversation with Melissa and I and others at the staff level. So I think that, you know, certainly it seems like a reasonable request and, and once we develop that framework. Given that you have enough time to, to complete whatever the board will require, it seems like a good tip of the hat to a longstanding tradition. Other comments, feedback from members of the board? Charlie?
So just for clarification. You guys are going to only allow parade participants. Now, are you going to be selling beer to them or you're just free handing beer to them?
We're handing it out. It's free of charge. We're not selling anything at all.
Okay.
So Charlie, you raise a good question and it's a distinction between the ordinance and our zoning regulation. You cannot, under, under our zoning regulations, sell alcohol. In, in that particular zone or on town property. You can, and it's because of the zone, I think, and Ruth can correct me if I'm wrong, but the zoning of where the park is prohibits the sale of alcohol. So even, even if you were to approve, get approval from the board for the consumption, you can't sell it. And that's, that's a distinction that's different in the ordinance than it is in the regulation. So that's a good point to, to clarify. And I swear, I thought you were going to ask, when you, when you asked about the parade participants, I thought you were going to ask if we'd be invited to march in the parade.
It's one parade, don't march in.
That thought had crossed my mind, however, that wasn't my main concern. Because I think even also, I mean, even if it was allowed with sales of alcohol, then I think you need a state permit as well, so. That was my other concern, if they were selling, so.
That is correct. You would need a, you would need a license in order to sell that, but you'd have to apply for a day license and we're not in the market to do that. Nor do we want that kind of responsibility.
The zoning regulations prevent the sale of alcohol in an R three zone, which happens to be where the park is.
So I, I'm curious, you know, I was, as you know, at where I was point for ten years and I, I used to run the carnival there. I never ran the beer garden, so I'm not, I don't remember how that worked. Was there any other? You know, thing, hoops you had to jump through as far as. You know, I think our guys were certified, you know, in ID checking or something, you know, that kind of stuff. Do you have to do other stuff like that to just, you know, make sure that? You know, the other rules besides just, you know, our approval of having beer are, are dealt with?
I think, I think, and I'm just going out on a limb here that where I was point, because they sold beer. At their beer gardens and because it was on their property. They probably had to have their people get certified to check IDs to do that. But because we're not selling it and we've always been like that, we've always given it away at the end of the parade. It's always been controlled. It's always been watched. We didn't have police officers in the beer gardens at times watching everything or even at the gate. Which if that's what we have to do, we will do. But to answer your question, I don't know if I have to have anybody certified. I don't believe so. Because we've never ran into that because we didn't sell it before.
Yeah, I was just curious.
And the warehouse point fairgrounds are in a different zone anyway. They're in a, they're in a B one zone.
No, it's a building.
Yeah. Well, it's almost a building. It's got to have four sides, I think. Any other questions or comments for Captain Lemay? Sarah?
Just a comment. I just want to say congratulations and I'm looking forward to this event. I think it's something for the community to really look forward to. We've been stuck inside for so long and it'll be nice to have, to celebrate something so great. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
It'll also be great for you guys to have a parade again back on that side of town. It's been way too long.
We're, we're looking forward to it and, you know, if it takes off again, who knows? Might do it again next year. We don't know. We'll see what our guys think. Trying to make it to where. We don't have to do a ton of work where that's where it was for the carnival for, to put it on for three days, you know, it was just a lot, a lot of work. Just didn't have the manpower anymore to do it. So we're looking forward to it. We got big plans. So stay tuned, August twenty first.
It's going to be great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda includes George Kripa, our grant program consultant. We are, we're making good progress in terms of having our, our small business and nonprofit assistance grant through the ARP. Available. So I'm going to ask, yeah, Vane?
No, I was just saying goodnight.
Oh, have a good one. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask George to kind of give us an update on where things stand and talk to us a bit about next steps.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for the opportunity to work with you on this program, which I think is going to be very beneficial to the town. As I understand, you've received both the document that explains the program. And the application form. I think it's relatively self-explanatory. And I'd be delighted to take any questions you may have on either document. Beyond that, once. This gets approved. And I'm not sure exactly what you folks need to do to, to accept this. But beyond that, we're going to do everything we can to move forward with. Advancing it forward to the businesses and the profits in the town. There are a variety of ways to reach out. And I would let, you know, it goes on the town website, et cetera. But I, I would defer to the first selectmen. The specifics about how it will be distributed. But if there are any questions, I'd be glad to take them right now.
Does everybody have a chance to review the attachments included in your packet? Questions or comments for George? Marie?
Yeah, on, on the small businesses. You've indicated they have to register to conduct business for twelve, twelve months. What about the new business in town that opened up? Just at the onset of everything closing down. And lost revenue that was anticipated. Kept the business open. Would they fall under? That even though they didn't, weren't able to have, and I'm looking at the bake shop in Bastille Plaza. Where she opened up and then everything closed up and her potential revenue moving forward was lost. Someone like that individual, would they qualify the way this is written?
Well, you know, unfortunately, there are going to be a lot of tough. Questions. I mean, you know, we have here twelve months. But suppose someone started eleven months and, you know, fifteen days. And are valuable to the community. Those are our questions I think we're going to look at. I think there's going to be. An evaluation once we get the complete scope of what the applicants are. And I would advocate for a lenient policy. But, you know, those are going to be tough questions. Where do you draw the line? Is it, is it eleven months and twenty-nine days? Where, where do you fall on that? And I think I would defer any hard answer to whether someone like that would qualify until. I have an opportunity to evaluate the entire scope of the applicants. And we have a limited amount of money. And, you know, other folks are going to weigh in on this. So I'm going to hope for a happy resolution to all of these questions.
I think the, the point that we're trying to, to get to with that is to, to have some determination so that a loss can be quantified. You know, you need to be able to demonstrate a loss in order for, for. You, you need to be able to demonstrate a loss due to the pandemic. Now that, there's also going to be. Conditions that are imposed by the federal government in the interim final rules that are, or the final rules rather that are put out. Pertaining to the ARP. So. What we're trying to be able to, to meet is that whatever expense we're trying to recognize is pandemic driven. So, you, you know, using the, the example of a bakery who opened in January of twenty twenty. And then closed down. And maybe reopened or maybe didn't. You can't really, you, you don't really have a benchmark to know that it was the pandemic that would have kept them out of business, you know? So we're trying to, to make that determination as to an established business that had a demonstrable impact from the pandemic. Maybe twelve months isn't the number, but that's like the, the concept that we're trying to get to is, did the pandemic cause that disruption in, in revenue? And that disruption in your business? How do you demonstrate that? If it's not twelve months, maybe it's six months. If it's, you know, but to George's point. At some point, somebody is going to be on either side of that line.
Right. Okay.
So, because you raised it, is twelve months the right line? You know, I mean, we can, we can have that discussion here and see if we can't work out something that, that we're all comfortable with. Do you want to leave enough flexibility and gray area in there so that that determination is made at the point of review? I'd rather have it be established at the outset, but you know, I leave that to the board for you guys to provide some, some insight on.
It's selectmen or Del here. Yeah, could, to your point, Jason, I mean, you almost really need like twenty-four months to establish. What they did in a normal year versus what they did in a COVID year to establish their true loss. Because in reality, if they started twelve months ago, COVID was already here. So how do you prove any loss at all? With that short time period?
I think that's what that's intending to do. No.
No.
No, that is what it was intended to do, but that's not what it says. You're right.
So in reality, it needs to stay.
We could do twelve months prior to the outset of the pandemic, which is what I thought I was supposed to say. Or. We could also take a, to George's point, a little bit of a more liberal approach, which is to say. Some demonstration that an executive order or the pan, or the pandemic itself had an adverse effect on the, the business. So for example, if you were a hair salon, you know, a barber shop, they were ordered to close for. Twelve or fourteen weeks or whatever it was. You know, there, if, if you can point to an order that had an adverse effect on the business. You can reasonably assume that that had an adverse effect on the business. You know, that, that executive order I mean did. So maybe that's a, a way to angle it. I don't know, I'm, I'm brainstorming.
I, I was also thinking that we could maybe say, you know, we, we have that timeline and then put a caveat that. You know. If funds allow, we would entertain, you know, a shorter timeline. You know, as long as a demonstrated need is, is apparent, you know? Just to give us that ability to re-review, to review. Okay, so, you know, say we only get. We don't have enough people to, to use the money and we do have a few of these edge cases that. That, you know, other than, you know, the twelve months, they would have qualified, you know, we, you know, that gives us the. Ability to, you know, to re-review them on a second tranche or something, you know?
That's actually, that's a good compromise. Sarah?
Selectmen must go. Yeah, I agree with what Alan said and I do agree with changing the verbiage to twelve months prior to the pandemic. But I can see Marie's point. There are a few businesses here that just happened to, to open up shop right as this hit. And, and they invested a lot of money and unfortunately didn't get the revenue. So I think there will be some exceptions. And I think that we should give them an opportunity as well, as long as it's, you know, allowed as far as if we don't have. Too many applicants for the money we have. But I think they should, we should have that option on there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not personally aware of any East Windsor businesses, but living close to the South Windsor line, I had that way quite a bit. And I remember just as we were shutting down, Joe's Pizza was ready to open up and they didn't open. And I was thinking, wow, that guy sunk a lot of, lot of dough into revamping that place. He's got a payment to make. And now, you know, we always get the PPP and stuff like that, but, you know, this is above and beyond that and, and. I, I think he, you know, somebody like that should, should be possibly able to access this.
So I'll, I'll provide you with an in-town example of somebody who is in that circumstance. Soto Optical opened Pasco's Common opened in January of twenty twenty. And then were forced to close down for four months, ultimately relocated to a different suite in Pasco's Common and then reopened. Just six or eight weeks ago, I think. So they, they certainly had an impact because of the pandemic. They also certainly were not here twelve months prior to the outset of the pandemic. And I'm sure could use, could use the help. The, the question that, that I think is not going to be resolved in this conversation is what does the law require? You know, I mean, and, and ultimately that's going to be the, the rubber match here is, is, you know, what are the restrictions that are put in place by the federal law? But I think certainly the, the sentiment being that, and this is to George's initial point. We want to be as, as. Accommodating to applicants as we can be to make sure that we're addressing a need imposed by the circumstances that makes the funding available. Is that the general sentiment?
May, may I, Mr. First Selectman? So my thinking was the twelve month timeframe. Was to establish that they were an actual entity in the town of East Windsor. Not a thought, a dream, something that folks wanted to do, but were prevented. So once you start drawing parameters. So, once you start drawing parameters on need, you start getting into those sticky questions. So the twelve months was meant to provide some sort of a measurement, a metric on the actual entity, that it was there and not something other than that. They were legit. And one of the last points was that they would need to provide tax records from two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty and must demonstrate an economic loss due to the pandemic. So I think you have, and then of course, it's always subject to the first selectmen and the board's uh, overall approval. So there's a lot of room, I think, in this document to take into account legitimate need. And there will be hard decisions that have to be made. I don't wanna sugarcoat that, that there's enough to give everybody what everybody wants. That's not likely to be the case. So there's going to be some tough decisions. There are going to need to be some, some parameters. I think the parameters are sufficiently flexible that within, again, the federal rules, uh, that we could do what's appropriate and what's going to be very transparent. And, you know, so there'll be some tussling at the edges, I'm sure. But, you know, anytime you try to do anything, there's always gonna be some issues involved. The only time everything is, is, is everybody's wonderful is when nothing's happening. So, you know, I think we just need to move forward and do it with, I think everyone has the right intentions. And I think, I don't, well, I'll leave it at that. I, I would, I would say that I think the document covers all the concerns that have been raised. But I have no pride of authorship, so feel free to amend it as you wish.
No, I just asked the question for clarification. I don't have any, um, feelings one way or the other as to who benefits from the program. I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna have a program out there, those that had a true loss are gonna be benefited. Um, that was the only point, point I was making. And I just threw that name out because it's the only one that I knew that was relatively new and, um, don't even know if that person's even gonna be interested or anything, uh, but it was just an example thrown out there. So I don't have anything invested one way or the other. But I wanna be able to explain it if somebody should ask.
Oh, of course.
Other, um, points of discussion on, on the, um, was this the guidance document, the eligibility criteria? Everything else looks okay?
Yeah.
Alan, you good?
Yes, I am.
Charlie, you're good? I saw Sarah and Marie respond, so how about, um, the, um, the application form? Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think it asks all the necessary, for all the unnecessary information, I think it's fine.
The planning department is, uh, converting this or developing this as a fillable printable form. Um, so that'll be, actually Amanda got pretty creative about it. Um, Ruth, I'm giving credit where I think credit's due, but correct me otherwise. Um, so you'll remember the, the, uh, beta tool that we developed for the commercial real estate listings. She's gonna adapt something similar to this so that when somebody fills out the application electronically, it, uh, automatically populates an email to, um, a designated email address. So the application goes right to where it needs to go to. Um, so it's, it's, uh, basically a one, one-stop shop for applicants. Um, and we can accept paper copies as well, you know, depending on the, the business or the applicant and the, um, you know, somebody may not be quite as tech savvy as others.
Yeah, and Jason, you probably haven't seen it yet, but Amanda did email you both of those, the PDF version and the link to the website.
I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, if you want, I can pop it up on my screen.
Yep, you should be able to share. Yeah, she sent it at six fifty-nine, so good turnaround time, I appreciate that.
To say as a longtime IT professional, make sure you test the living crap out of that from both inside the organization and from outside the organization as well.
Can you see the screen?
Yep.
All right, so then she has added the
Look at that.
Nice. So this information will end up, you can download to an Excel spreadsheet right from here. It'll tally that all up. And she also, um, it's the snip, let me do this. I'm sorry. It's the PDF version as well, that's a fillable form. So there you have it.
Great.
Yeah, to, to Alan's point, let's kick the tires pretty hard on that, uh, but that, that does.
Jason?
Yeah.
One thing that might wanna not to throw a monkey wrench in it now that it's all done, but one thing that might wanna get added to the, to it is contact name. Because you have full name of business, but not the name of the contact at the business.
Very good point.
Yeah.
You wanna make sure you're talking to the right person.
Very good points. That's why we do this collaboratively.
And we could use you as a UI analyst at the bank.
No, you couldn't.
I'm just proud I know what you just said.
I don't.
Uh, user interface.
Ah.
Or what?
Other, other feedback? So, so our suggested timeline was to have this ready to go live for June first. Um, and then have, uh, an open or be soliciting applications through July first. Um, does that sound like a reasonable timeframe?
I think so.
Now, George, uh, being the, the former federal, uh, official that he is, would point out that the only real sticking point is making sure the feds get us the money. So they're supposed to have it to us by June fifteenth, according to the federal law. So fingers crossed. We could, we could delay it until the, the cash is actually in hand. But that's gonna slow things down in terms of actually getting relief out to people.
You put that in a little fine print. You'll get the money when the money's here.
Contingent upon appropriate funding being provided by the federal government.
There you go.
I would write the document.
Actually, you know, we, I was half joking, but that's actually not a bad idea.
Yeah, it's a good one.
That makes me think of another thing too, is, you know, once we, we, um, somebody submits this, what do they get back from us? Do they get a, hey, great, we're gonna get back to you in twelve days or, you know, we gotta give them some sort of expectation. Um, so they submit that and then they should get an email back or something, or maybe even something on the screen, uh, saying, you know, we got your application on such and such date at such and such time. And, uh, you know, we're not gonna do anything if we don't get the money and blah, 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 you know, anything that we think might be important to let them know. And we'll check back in with you or if you have further questions, you know, call so-and-so.
One of the things that, um, one of the other, that, you know, you're right. Uh, we also should probably have a, a terms and conditions acknowledgement. Um, so I'd like to set up a conversation for George and I with, uh, Pullman, just to review what the specific requirements within the law is and to help, uh, to, uh, enlist them to help us generate the legal, legalese of that. Um, so we can have that ready for you. I don't wanna commit for them, but, uh, with a target date of, uh, June third meeting. You know, we'll try and get that as quickly as possible. You guys are filling up my week next week, like it's like nobody's business. Um, but does that sound reasonable? You know, so, so George and I will talk with, uh, with the attorneys to, to make sure that we have the Ts crossed and Is dotted that we need to have an order and move forward.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Yes.
So, you know, George, George has been coordinating this, but I also wanna recognize that there's, there are a lot of town staff that have put their, their eyes and their thoughts into this. And, and I'm gonna, at the risk of naming names, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna omit somebody, but, um, it's been Ruth, Clark, George, me, Helen, Patty, Joe, Len. And if anybody, if I missed anybody, let me know.
Did you say Amy?
Amy, Amy O'Toole, yep. Um, so it's been, we're trying to do this in a, casting a very broad net to get the perspectives of, of the expertise that we have here to put forward a high-quality product. Um, so this is a really a, a team effort, you know, on a day-to-day level. Any other questions or comments for George?
I would just like to say that I'm looking forward to the end of Zoom meetings so that I can share with everyone what we're thinking, looking at everyone eye to eye and being able to shake your hand and, and, you know, work on the project in a little closer fashion than, than this. This is a, a very adequate tool, but, but it, it misses the, the, the small-town spirit of what we're trying to accomplish. So I'm looking forward to, to meeting you all and, and looking you all right in the eye when we do this.
Sounds good.
Great start.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much, George, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Um, in the interest of Ruth's time, um, I'd like to take agenda item nine E up and then come back to nine D. Um, is, just cuz we're tying up her evening. Um, could I have a motion to take nine E out of order?
Selectman Muska will move to take nine E out of order. Sorry, Marie.
That's all right.
Is there a second?
Marie, a second.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, selectmen De Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
All right. Um, so this is another project that, uh, has come out of the planning department and it's had, um, some, uh, good feedback from both Clark and from Ruth. Um, it's been a longstanding objective of the Conservation Commission, um, to allow for a, an open space assessment, um, adjustment. Um, there are models that have been used in other towns. I think this is most closely fashioned after the town of Ellington. Um, and there are, I gotta find my right attachment here. Um, there are a couple of points that, that kinda bring it, that I wanna point out. Uh, in the qualification criteria, um, the applicants would have to be in one of those zones that are identified, which is R1, R2, R3, A1 and A2. Um, there had been discussion at one point, and I can't remember if it was at the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Conservation Commission, about it incorporating all zones in town. And the, the accommodation was that it would be limited to those that are either residential or agricultural. Uh, Ruth, do you remember where that was?
That was the desire of the Conservation Commission. And when, uh, they sought comment from Planning and Zoning, Planning and Zoning, um, they, their preference was to have it as listed.
Okay. Um, and then another point of, of, uh, discussion was in, uh, section four A, which is the acreage. Um, the acreage in the draft in front of you was set at four acres in excess of the, basically the buildable lot. That number has fluctuated a little bit. Sometimes it's a, a percentage of the total building lot. Sometimes it's more than four, sometimes it's a little bit less than four. But, um, my recollection from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and either Alan or Ruth can correct me, but, uh, that four was the reasoned number. Uh, or did they want something higher than that and Conservation wanted to stick it four? Remind me of how that went, cuz this is now going back to March.
So my understanding of it, uh, third person, was that, um, Planning and Zoning Commission wanted a higher number. Um, and so, uh, Conservation Commission was pitching the four acres and that's, they, they stayed with that.
Alan, is it, I, that sounds right to me, but is that your recollection too?
That's exactly right, yeah.
Okay. Uh, other than that, other than those two things, the, the eligible zoning and the acreage requirement, I think this is all pretty self-explanatory. Um, so have, have board members had a chance to review it? Do they, do you have any questions or comments? Um, are we ready for a motion this evening? Or do you wanna, um, do you wanna kind of digest this for a couple of weeks and then take it up again? Where, where are you guys?
Selectman Nordell has just one question. Do, do you need to reapply each year or once you've applied, as long as the land use doesn't change, you're still applied?
So if you note the redlined version in section, what is this? Five E, um, there's a note from Pullman and Comley saying exactly that, that we may wanna include some sort of a, um, she refers to it as a temporal qualifier, so some renewal period that has to happen every so often, whether it's annually or biannually or what have you. Um, that's not currently in the draft, but we could.
Charlie brings up a good point, and I think with the four ninety, there's a, there's a renewal. Yeah, you, you know, you're out and it reverts, so I think, I think we should have one. And I think it should be longer than a year, because, I mean, this is a long-term, it doesn't do this, it's intended to be a long-term thing, right, for it to be effective, right? So to me, I think it should be longer than a year.
Triannually, quadrannually, every five years?
The only issue I have with, I mean, not that I'm opposed to it, but giving a long extension of time is how would landowners be notified or would they not be notified? Say it's ten years. Would they be notified that, hey, your application is almost up, you need to reapply this year? Would that be done by the town, that effort? Or would they have to remember that, hey, my five years is up, I gotta reapply for that? Um.
One thing we could do is we could tie it to a benchmark that, that people should know. You know, I mean, uh, we have to do a revale every five years, so we could tie it to the revale. The other thing we could do is tie it to a four ninety. Um, I mean, it's basically a four ninety program and it's just the optional provision of PA four ninety. So, um, we could tie it to the PA four ninety renewals, which actually I think is annually.
Yeah, I mean, if, and really, yeah, the devil is in details, as much as I would like it to be longer, because, you know, the idea is this is a long-term thing that you wanna do, not just, I'm gonna do this this year and then I'm gonna build a giant garage on it next year or whatever. Um, you know, so, um, but the devil is in the details, right? Like, to Charlie's point, like, how do you, you know, put numbers on the town to send a reminder? Or you have the persons that, you know, bonus on the person to have a reminder? And, and I think with four ninety, I'm rusty, but four ninety, it's on the person, right, to remember, so.
Yeah, but it's also pretty commonly known that, I, I think it's in the month of May that they need to come and submit their, their, um, renewal. So it's pretty common that they'll know, okay, I gotta get it into between, you know, May first and May thirty-first, if that's effectively when it is, I think it's May. So, I mean, there's, that's, people are used to that.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably the way to go then.
Have you had any feedback from Helen? On the comments made here on the timeframe? Cause it's, um, it says she'll, she's going to do it.
Yeah. Um, I don't know that she's seen the, the edits from Pullman, but she did, Clark did work closely on the initial draft. Um, so. Because, you know, there's a couple of edits that we're going to make to this. It doesn't sound like we're going to act on this tonight, so we can run it past her and get her feedback, but. Are we in general agreement that it should be run concurrent with the PA four ninety renewals?
I would agree with that.
I'm fine with that as well.
For application, you mean?
Yeah, reapplication.
Cause currently it's September 1st to October 31st in here.
Yeah, that, and that may be what I, my recollection is that four ninety is a May application, but, um. Now that we're sitting here in May and there hasn't been a parade of farmers going by, I might be remembering that wrong. Um, so it's a point I'll check with Helen. I remember last year, there was a bunch of people who were coming through looking for the assessor. I just thought it was, while we weren't here and, and most staff weren't here during the month of May. I'll check with her. Anything else on this? Okay. Ruth, thank you very much for hanging in there with us tonight. I certainly appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
So now returning to the call of the agenda, um, we'll take up the demolition delay ordinance. So I have some, some sad news to share with you all first, and if you hadn't heard already, and that's kind of one of the things that leads to the, uh, suggestion that we revisit this. I don't know if you've all heard or not, but Barbara Smigal passed away. Um, she'd been sick for quite some time and she succumbed, um, about a week ago. Um, so that's certainly some, some sad news and she was a very, very passionate and dedicated person and, um, I'd share that with you all. Unrelated to that, um, there are some developments that are going on in town, um, that you're all familiar with, whether it's gravel pit solar or the, the Silverman, uh, development over on Route five. Um, and they all have, uh, run into some bureaucratic delays on our part, um, around historic barns. And there's an ordinance, it's ordinance oh three dash three, the demolition delay ordinance that, um, precludes, um, those projects from being able to move forward. In a reasonable time period, um, without consultation with the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, and there's a couple of problems with that. First, the Historic Preservation Commission does not have a quorum, uh, so they actually can't meet and, and opine on these things. In a timely fashion, which necessitates a 90-day delay for any of these projects automatically. Um, so that's a, a concern in terms of the, you know, a business friendly approach to, um. Town operations. The second problem is that it vests a lot of power in an advisory board. The Historical Commission is advisory to the selectmen and the selectmen are the policymakers. Um, so. It's probably in, in inappropriately vested in them to begin with. So I took a look at the ordinance and ran it past Pullman with some suggested edits. Um, that basically say referrals for demolition delays for historic structures would come to this board, our board, the policymaking board. Um, for review, um, and that we may extend the period of time for additional referrals if we, if we deem it necessary, which. Really is more in line with how our, our town governance is supposed to operate anyway. Um, and it all, what that also would do is allow a very reasonable pathway for, um, development that may be coming into town. Because this board will always have a quorum, you know, we're, we're the head of the government, we're the elected body. So it's not likely or, or really even possible, um, that this board wouldn't be able to take action within a reasonable period of time. Whereas that board, as with many other civic functions, you can't find people to serve on it. Um, or, or you can't find qualified people to serve on it. And so I, I would suggest these, um. Modest revisions to you guys for your consideration and discussion.
I, you know, I just have a question. I, I just, I remember when I was taking the, getting the approval to put the trail in for Melrose, the, the Melrose Park. I had to go through a number of hoops with deep and one of them was, I had to have the state archaeologist out there and we, and he did a dig and. Decided what was going on. He mentioned to me, you know, he had asked, are you intending on tearing down those barns? Uh, you know, that are in the upper field where the, the cornfields are and stuff. And, you know, we, we were going around them, we weren't touching them, but, and I thought he said to me that if you're doing something with those, they need to be graded before you can. Do anything with them. Is, is this something that, that they have? Do they have a state issue here too? Or is it just us?
No, but there is a statute. Hang on a second, I'll find it. Up to, up to ordinance. Um, it's twenty nine, four oh six, um, which is the permit for demolition of a particular structure exemptions and a waiting period. That's the statute that allows the ordinance to, to be operative. Um, and it talks about, um. A maximum number of days that it can be delayed. And that's why you'll, you'll see in green, um, in green is Josh's edits. Um, so for no more than 180 days, he inserted in there because that's the maximum delay allowable by the enabling statute. Um, so that's, that's, it's twenty nine, four oh six that speaks to the concern you have. But it's a, it's an enabling statute. It's left to the local discretion.
Yeah, I mean, not that it matters to our decision-making, but I, I just was curious if they had a state.
Yeah. The other thing, you know, one of the things that, that Josh, uh, inserted in here that I think, uh, as I read it probably is inaccurate is the, um. The change from 15 days to 30 days. And that's because that's talking about a, a number of days from the publication of a notice, which also has to happen within. A prescribed number of days. So if the intention here is to get it to work within 30 days, that really should remain 15 if you work through the rest of the ordinance. By leaving it at 30, it, it takes the waiting period as could be a maximum of 45 days, um, without intervention from the selectmen who may extend it further. So. I would, I would actually seek to reject that edit, but accept the rest of it. Marie?
Yeah, um, the only problem I have with it, I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with what the change is going to be here, but going back to the Barbara Smigal days. And when this ordinance was brought out, it had to do with the fact that there was a house on, on Main Street in Warehouse Point, um. That was scheduled for demolition and they hadn't had a chance yet to, um, make a determination if the historical society wanted to get it because it was on the. Um, state historical registry, if I recall that conversation back then. Um. If we take this over, how are we going to know if something is? Is historically protected?
So there is a requirement that there be a public notice, uh, within a certain number of days. I think it's within 10 days of the building department getting the application for demolition. That needs to be in a, a publication of record. And then if there is, uh, somebody who submits inquiry within a, a, also a fixed number of days. Um, that triggers the additional review. If there is no inquiry within a fixed number of days, the demolition can move forward. And that's existing in the ordinance. Um, the, the issue is the automatic referral to the Historic Commission, um, who. For, you know, at this point in time, anyway, can't actually do anything. Um, so it, it's that which causes an automatic 90-day delay, which could have adverse, uh, effects on, on other things we have going on. And it's not because there's necessarily anything of historic import, simply that we don't have enough bodies to sit in the chairs to say there's nothing to see here.
Right.
And again, I come back to the, the advisory capacity of the commission anyway to the select.
I mean, I would just say, and I'll use the, um, mill, mill site there in Broadwick as an example. Far as I'm concerned, that building is of no value and should be taken down, my personal opinion. But I know on the flip side of that. Historically wise, there's a difference of opinion.
Yeah, we're going to have a, a very robust discussion about that in our next meeting, um, to include the, um, the folks from Raytheon. Um, I'll tell you, I shared that opinion, um, and how, in the last three weeks I've toured it twice. Um, and I no longer share that perspective. There is, part of the building is down and, and is going to be continuing to come down. Um, but, um, there is a, there are some good bones there that really could be preserved. You know, if, if the appropriate circumstances lined up. So, uh, I, I just suggest we, we. Um, kind of withhold judgment on that until we actually see some, some photos and hear from the Raytheon folks about, um, what they see is feasible and not. And, um, Lee Hoffman will join us for that conversation as well. Not to get too far ahead of my skis, but one of the concerns about that, that they've had is that they can't find a buyer for it. Um, and a buyer may be materializing. So, you know, the, the conversation should remain fluid until we talk with them. On the, on the ordinance, do we move this forward? Do you want to marinate on it? Do we want to, is this something you don't want to do? Where, where are you guys?
You know, it's, it's kind of a tough situation because I would like to have the, you know, there's some, some, uh, direction to a future board of selectmen. That you need to, you know, put the, uh, you know, you need to get input from the His Historical Commission. Uh, and obviously that, that would do us no good at this point in time anyway, but, I mean, there are, there are, I'm sure scenarios where. You would want to, you know, to know something. And I know with Barbara, it's talking specifically about Marie's, um. Point of that, that the example that she made, like, it's not necessarily that they want to like block that from happening, but they may want to. Uh, remove or, you know, or work to, you know, to negotiate the removal of a certain specific thing in there that, that, you know, has some value historically, you know? Um, so, you know, in the case of a barn, you know, they may want to be able to reclaim the wood or take it down and put it up somewhere else, you know, theoretically. Uh, you know, so like, there should be some sort of historical review and we should, it should not just be the board of selectmen. Because I think that, you know, the board of selectmen may, could just be only thinking of. The business aspect of it, you know, and, and, and you need to take into account, you know, at least get a, a grade on, you know, is, you know, sure it's old. But does it have actual value, you know, um, and, and should we be recognized that in some way? Is it unique? Is it the last one? You know, we kind of need to figure out that and it doesn't have to take 90 days. You can see. Before, you know, maybe 90 days seems reasonable, but things move a lot quicker now. And I don't, I don't think it needs to be 90 days. So I'm for shortening it up, but I still think we need to put some sort of ask to some historic, if it's not our commission, somebody that would some sort of. Knowledge in the subject. And, and our historicals commission may or may not have that knowledge, really. I'm not sure how you handle that. And I don't want to tie it up forever, but I don't think we should have banned in some sort of look at the historical value of things.
So you want to take a shot at rewrite rewriting it?
I'm not on the spot.
No, no, no. But you got, you know, a week and a half or so.
Okay. Yeah, I could. Toss it around a little.
That'd be great. Everybody good with Alan taking a shot at that?
Yeah, I, I agree with Alan fully. Um, I mean, even if it just, and I, again, to his point. I mean, you could make it, you could write it so that it says one member of the historical commission, but then you don't know if that one. Member is going to do the proper research and, and get the real facts, um, the proposed. You know, demolition property. So, yeah. But, uh, yeah, I agree with Alan. It's, it's somewhere it needs to. It's some type of historical review by someone who knows. And I don't think the board of selectmen is really that bored.
Our historical commission may not be, they may not have that expertise. It may, at some point in time, it always depends on who's there, you know? And right now they may not even have that expertise.
And you can't even, you can't even use shippo, uh, because you can't guarantee that they would turn it around in any, any fixed amount of time.
And that's the other problem with using an outs, any kind of on, you know, outside consultant. Uh, you know, I guess you would, I mean, due diligence, if you say, hey, state, come in and take a look at this and they say, well, we'll get to you in, you know. Four months, it's all right. Well, sorry, forget it, you know? It's, it's over, you know? I mean, we need to recognize the fact that we can't just be letting things, you know, fester for a long time because, you know, bureaucracy.
Yeah. I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's as simple as, um, uh, revisiting. The expiration period, you know, maybe it's not, you know, 90 days, but 45 days and keep everything else status quo. You know, I mean, I, I just. It seems like we're, we're building in a, a 90-day logjam of our own making. I'm just, I'm trying to figure, figure out how to unjam that.
No, I agree. It's too long. And I also agree that the board of selectmen should make the final decision. They should, they should get a recommendation from the historical commission. Uh, if that's available, if they can, and, and use that in their decision. So if we got that recommendation, then, you know, that, that's part of our decision-making process. We can reject it or accept it, you know, but we, we should, at least that information should be brought forward and debated publicly, you know?
So the, the commission, the, the board of selectmen shall get an opinion from the Historic Preservation Commission within 45 days, if, if, if available. I don't know.
If they were able to do so, yeah, something like that.
All right. So.
Damn it.
You go the opposite way and just say that once the notice is produced, the historical society has. Access amount of days to report to the board of selectmen if there's an issue.
All right. We'll, we'll circulate this amongst us. Is that, is that legal? We can do that?
Yeah, two of you can. All right. Um, where are we now? We did that, we did that, we did that. Selectmen's reports, right? So. Um, mine is. Briefish. Um, so beginning this week, town facilities have reopened to the public for normal business activities, uh, except for the senior center. Which will reopen for normal indoor activities beginning on June 1st. Um, the town will be adhering to the guidelines issued by CDC and Governor Lamont's latest executive orders. Which is that anyone who's fully vaccinated can come into municipal facilities unrestricted. Anyone who's not fully vaccinated will still be required to wear a mask while indoors. Um, I, as I'm sure you all were, I was delighted to see the outcome of the referendum last week, which saw the passage of, of all three questions. Um, and I'll spare you guys the, the details of those because you're all well familiar with them. Um, on May 11th, I met with the newly, uh, new board leadership at the Connecticut Trolley Museum. The museum has been a staple in East Windsor since the 1940s, and they do have a newly invigorated, uh, board of directors who have some really awesome ideas for making the museum an even more impressive regional destination. Um, we discussed opportunities to seek additional state funding as well as the new American Rescue Plan funding program that the town will be offering. On May 12th, I was pleased to visit with the, uh, folks at Lincoln Technical Institute who are celebrating their 75th anniversary. And have educated more than a quarter of a million students across the company's history. The school's leadership were kind enough to welcome my staff and me and to provide us with, uh, a really awesome and hands-on tour of the programs that they offer. Um, that same day, I was happy to join ISO New England as a panelist to discuss the municipal perspective regarding the citing process for grid scale solar projects. It was a great opportunity to share some best practices as well as both good and bad experiences. Uh, with leaders who are going to be working in the, in this new and emerging technology for quite some time. Uh, other panelists on that, uh, panel included representatives from the Citing Council, from DEEP and from environmental advocacy groups. On the 13th, I met with the president and CEO of Specialty Printing at their facilities in the industrial park. Specialty Printing started in a barn in Ellington and now has more than 200 employees. Um, they work closely with USDA, with the US Postal Service, with Johnson and Johnson, and many household products. They work closely with USDA, with the US Postal Service, with Johnson and Johnson, and many household products. If you have food in your home, you have something that was made right here in East Windsor and it came right out of that facility. Next week, DECD Commissioner Layman and I will be visiting with them again to discuss expansion opportunities and I'm really excited about that. On the fourteenth, I testified, as I said, I testified in front of the legislature. Asking for the state to consider conveying the Solent North Facility to the town of East Windsor, as well as asking them. To lift low income restrictions on homes on South and Phelps Road. Which is a problem that has lingered for many, many years and that we're getting closer to solving. Lifting the restriction is a significant step towards granting relief to those homeowners who own those homes. And something that I'm hopeful will happen within the next few weeks. We're winding down the town's vaccination clinics shortly. Today, we partnered again with Southern Auto Auction, Priority Urgent Care and USDA to do a joint Farmers to Families Fresh Food Box Distribution Event. At a Johnson and Johnson Vaccine Clinic. I want to thank and recognize Deputy First Selectman D'Souza, who I believe has been at every one of those Fresh Food Box Distribution Events. Our final town-sponsored clinic for vaccine administration will be tomorrow and it'll be held at Mill Pond Village from eight thirty to four. Walk-ins are welcomed. This Saturday, the Warehouse Point Library will be holding a book fair from eight AM to three PM to benefit and showcase the library. So stop on down and add to your summer reading list. On June first, the town will be sponsoring an Economic Development Forum in partnership with Advanced CT. That will look into tools and strategies available to our community to encourage small-scale and large-scale economic development. That discussion will be held via Zoom. And lastly, we're excited to announce that the East Windsor Summer Concert Series, as we talked about earlier, will begin on June tenth. And will be from six thirty to eight at the town park. We're very excited to showcase the new. Band shell that's there and to get back to some good in-person community events. So that's my update. I'd recognize the Deputy First Selectman.
Jay, I have nothing to report tonight. I only had one meeting and it was last night and it was repetitive. Information that I have given to the board previously, so I don't have anything today.
Okay, no. Charlie?
I wasn't expecting that. She caught me off guard. Okay. On May tenth, I attended the special presentation given by the East Windsor Police Department to the Diversity Council. The police presented testimony on how they handle situations, train officers, their progress on becoming an accredited police department. And where they stand in regards to complying with the new police accountability bill. They also discussed their future plans and techniques in ways in which they will improve the department's handling of racial, social. And sexual orientation issues. The presentation was very informative and I thought displayed. How diverse and advanced our town's police department already is. I wish the meeting had been better attended. And I look forward to seeing our police grow and adapt with all the goals that they have set for themselves. On May eleventh, the town. Budget referendum was held and all the budget and questions passed as Jason mentioned. May twelfth, I attended the Police Commissioners Meeting. Several complaints about speeding on Depot Street and Reservoir. Av were brought up to their attention and the department will be taking action on this and monitoring both roads with more frequency. On May thirteenth, I attended the last PTO meeting of the year. Despite all the COVID restrictions. We still managed to raise money and hold fundraisers that support both the Broadbrook Elementary School and the East Windsor Middle School. We're still looking for members if anyone is interested for next year. And that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Baker.
And I have no report for you this evening. I yield back the balance of my time to Selectman Muska.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Muska.
Okay, on May tenth, I also attended that Diversity Council Special Meeting in conjunction with the East Windsor Police Department. Charlie went into detail on that, so I don't need to. I feel that our police department is always proactive and always looking ahead and I commend them for their work. In honor of National Police Week, it was my pleasure to go on a ride along with Officer Zachary Sherman on Sunday. Officer Sherman has been with the East Windsor Police Department for nearly six years. Is a valuable member of our patrol division and he answered all of my questions and educated me on domestic violence protocol. This is my third ride along with the department and I encourage anyone who is interested in understanding the life of a police officer. To contact the police department to make an appointment to go on a ride along. Jason and Charlie already talked about the budget. On May twelfth, I attended the Board of Education meeting held via Zoom. Broadbrook Elementary School Principal Laura Fox gave a presentation on Aces Day, which was held on May eleventh. And Field Day will be June fourth. A curriculum report was given on the SATs. The official last day of school will be June fifteenth and graduation day is June sixteenth. On May thirteenth, the Veterans Commission met at the American Legion Post Forty. Much discussion revolved around the planning and execution of the Memorial Day Parade, which is a go this year. And will leave from the Town Hall Annex promptly at ten AM. The veterans are considering holding another paver fundraiser for the Memorial Green. And will be selling poppies Memorial Day Weekend at Geisler's. Boy Scout Troop eighty-nine will be assisting with the distribution of flags on veterans' graves at St. Catherine Cemetery beginning this evening. The commission is hoping to make a decision on holding their race this year by the next meeting so they can begin planning. On May nineteenth, the Board of Finance held their regular meeting. The Board of Finance will be putting in a request to have a joint meeting with the Board of Education. To discuss some discrepancies within reports and to get on the same page when it comes to finances. It was cutting out a little bit on Amy's audio, but I believe three hundred thousand dollars of real estate taxes are still owed to the town. Two hundred and sixty thousand are from Walmart. And many departments, including Town Clerk and Police Department, I didn't hear all of them with the audio. Have met their revenue budgets for this fiscal year. The Trolley Museum begins their summer music series tomorrow night with Just Genie. Tickets are ten dollars and can be purchased at. C T dash trolley dot org. The East Windsor Garden Club will be hosting their plant and yard sale this Saturday. From nine AM to two PM at two thirty-five Ry Street. And there's just lots of exciting things happening in town and now that the weather's nice, I hope that everyone will get out and enjoy. Thanks.
Thank you. Public participation, is public second opportunity to address members of the board or items that you think ought to be. On our radar screen. So, Mr. Leach, name and address, please.
Public Leach, thirty-nine Church Street. I just wanted to clarify that the. The Board of Selectmen's approval of alcohol on town properties. Scout Hall is a leased property, but it resides on town property. I would imagine that would include that facility. Was that, would that be correct?
So without the benefit of reviewing the lease and shooting from the hip, I would, my guess would be that the building is under the control of the. Of Scout Hall, the grounds would be under the control, whatever, whatever's not covered in the lease would be under the control of the town. So for example, if. You know, the, the fire department wanted to do their beer garden on one of the soccer fields. The Board of Selectmen would likely have jurisdiction over that, is my guess. But if there was somebody who wanted to do a wine tasting inside Scout Hall. I don't believe we would have jurisdiction over that, that that would fall to the Scout Hall Committee. I'm guessing.
Okay, and it's, it's always been considered since it's on town property that no alcohol was allowed. So. Anyway, I guess we'll review that and move forward from there. Thanks.
Some of the, some of the members of the Scout Hall Advisory Committee, or whatever the name of the management organization is. Have actually asked that, that at some point in time the lease be reviewed anyway. So that could be a discussion point at that point in time. I also have a message that Joe has his hand raised. Joe, if you give your, your name and your address, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Joe Mallon, four South Road. First, first of all, Jason, you and the board, I want to thank you for everything you're doing for us over here. This place has been known for years as a Twilight Zone and hopefully that'll come to an end. Second of all, I do have a question on sewer reline. You had mentioned that they gotta replace a hundred feet of sewer. Is this through the yards or is, my concern is, do we need to move stuff? We don't know exactly where they're digging. When, where they're lining. So if we have to move stuff out of our yard or around our yard so that they have room to work.
So Joe, I have your email, right?
Yes.
I'm going to ask Len Norton to get in touch with you directly and provide you with that answer. I don't want to, I don't want to tell you something that's not accurate. I'll ask him to get in touch with you tomorrow or Monday.
Okay, appreciate that. Again, I want to thank everybody for the work that you're putting into, like I say, to get, try and get us out of the Twilight Zone.
We're making good progress, man. I'm pretty optimistic, but you know, you never know what's coming next. Things, things seem to be lining up in a good way, though.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, well, I'll have Len be in touch. There's no other public participation. We will have a really brief executive session and then call it a night. There will be. There will be no action afterwards. So Peg, you, you won't need to dial back in for anything other than the adjournment time. So could I have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session by Marie, just at nine oh. One PM.
Any discussion? Being none, Selectman D'Souza? Selectman Baker? Selectman Nordell? Selectman Muska? Okay, we're in executive session at nine oh two. Everybody have a good night. Thank you very much. We're out of executive session at nine sixteen. Is there any further business to come before the board?
Selectman Nordell will move to adjourn our regular meeting at nine sixteen PM.
Is there a second? Close. Motion has been made and seconded, it's not debatable. Selectman D'Souza? Selectman Baker? Selectman Nordell? Selectman Muska? We were adjourned at nine sixteen PM.